Okay, Mayor, we are recording and live on Facebook.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's August 4th. This is a special called City Council Meeting. Just so if you can see everybody, councilman, everyone but council member Blackstone who had to work today is present. I guess everyone would pull up the agenda, make sure I'm going in the right order. Everyone want to bow their heads? We'll do the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day in our community. And we thank you for the opportunity to serve those who live and do business here. And may your guiding hand help us in all that we do to keep our community strong and successful. In your name we pray. Amen. Go please, say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, of God. Thank you all. We have just one item on the agenda today is discussion of Governor's Executive Order 2020-50, which was announced last Wednesday and published on Monday. I told Sean, I'll go over a little bit of, just so everyone on the call and those watching, know what the order covers and things, and then I'll turn it over to Sean about impacts to city operations. And I know Chief Hamilton's also here. A lot of this deals with enforcement. So, the governor issued an executive order on Monday, talking, dealing with a number of things, but the biggest pieces were making all Accelerate SC, the task force that the state put together around reopening. The recommend, the guidelines by Accelerate SC for restaurants and gatherings, no longer just recommendations, but mandatory across the state. He defines a lot of those things and lists them out. I think we, I can touch a little bit on what the business community has already knows and and if they're any cool, kind of, we're happy to talk about that as well. Things such as employees and customers wearing masks as they, customers as they enter the building and when they're not eating or drinking, for employees throughout, throughout their shift. The continuance of no sale of alcohol past 11:00 PM. Occupancy being 50% of the fire marshal listed capacity. Indoor and outdoor tables seated six feet apart. Limited, the, limiting the number of people in a party to eight outside of, unless it's a family unit or same household. And then cleaning, cleaning routines and a couple of other things that are specific to restaurants. That, there's a lot of them. I don't need to get into all of them, but I encourage businesses to look at those. The order also talks about gatherings. It defines gatherings to include, but not limited to, I'm not going to read this whole list, but relevant to today. Gatherings include festivals, parades, concerts, theaters, stadiums, arenas, colosseums, auditoriums, grandstands, concert halls, amphitheaters, assemblies, parks and/or similarly, similarly operated businesses or facilities. Specifically for these gatherings, let me make sure I get this right. It, the, the governor has now mandated that the, all of these gatherings indoor or outdoor follows certain guidelines. These are no, these were recommendations. They're going to sound familiar based on stuff that we've been doing the whole time. The governor's now decided to make them mandatory across the state. One, the total number of employees, customers, patrons, suppliers, vendors, visitors, or any persons present for or in attendance at a gathering shall not exceed 50% of the occupancy limit or 250 persons, whichever is less. Two, all employees, customers, patrons, visitors, or other persons in attendance shall wear a face covering masks. And they define what face coverings are. Three, sale of alcohol should not happen, occur between hours of 11:00 and 10:00, 11:00 PM and 10:00 AM. Four, the hosts or operators or owners of the gathering shall take response, reasonable steps to incorporate sanitation, social distancing, and hygiene guidelines from the CDC and DHEC. The third thing that he did that I can briefly kind of talk about is he has urged all cities and counties to pass a mask requirement and ordinance for their entire community. I don't think that is a topic for today. This council last, the last meeting passed a resolution to encourage masks, but made it pretty clear that we, we did not have any intention of requiring it across the city. So, I don't believe, at least that's not something that I'm looking to really talk about. I think we've done what we're going to do in that regard. Really, the meat of today, I think, is the impact of some of these things on what we do as a city, particularly our events. The governor has stated these are temporary measures, but does not define what temporary means. They go into, they went into effect Monday. And again, I think the top two things that are of importance today are mandating an occupancy limit of 250 people or 50% of an occupancy limit. And two, requiring all persons involved and attending to wear a mask as a condition of entry or participation. These are things that obviously cities were not necessarily consulted on, but this is a part of the executive order that is now enforceable. Furthermore, they direct local law enforcement to enforce these measures. So hence why I've asked Chief Hamilton to kind of be here and weigh in when he feels it's appropriate, or if anyone has questions. So Sean, I'm going to turn it over to you, or, or I guess David, did I miss anything of, in that nature? Okay.
Sean, I think you got it.
Okay, thank you. Sean, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I'm sorry.
Whoops, that's, turn it over to you Sean about what this might do for the impact of some of our operations based on some staff recommendations.
Sure. So the immediate two events that this impacts the most would be our Sounds of Summer, Friday Night Concert Series, and then also the farmer's market. We believe that the farmer's market can continue. At no one point have, have we ran into an instance where there was more than 250 people. It's a Saturday by Saturday basis from 8:00 to noon. It's a pretty steady stream of individuals, of patrons coming. But they, anywhere from, from 50 or so and more are visiting the vendors who have already been required to wear a mask. So that isn't, that doesn't change anything there. The patrons under this executive order would be required to wear a mask. All of the vendors are facing outward underneath the farmer's market pavilion. It is gone definitely well, to the point where even when we're not in a pandemic, this may be something that, that layout may be something that we want to keep, where the patrons are kind of walking on the outside and not congregating. And so we, we believe that that is something that can continue. We have also noticed and a decent amount of people are using EBT or SNAP benefits in order to have access to healthy and fresh vegetables and fruit. And they can, our farmer's market will, will take those. And so I think it's important for us to continue. Continue having that, that farmer's market and venue for, for those individuals to be able to shop. But then the, the more pressing event that I think that we're here to discuss is our Sounds of Summer. As mentioned in a correspondence last, late last week, our Commerce Park venue is not very conducive to limiting capacity at 250 people as present. Right now, we have multiple entry points. We have an entry point on several, several points on Depot Street and by Depot and Jones, also Depot and Main Street. We have an entry point off of Trade. We have an entry point coming in from Kachina 100. Potentially from, on the other side of the railroad tracks from Wall. So there, there are multiple entry points, which makes present controlling that capacity and enforcing 250 people max an issue. And then two, just the, the mandating of, or enforcing of the mask requirement per this executive order. We feel that that puts our founding police department in a difficult position to have to enforce. It puts our special events staff in a difficult position to have to enforce.
Hey Sean, one quick question. Do you not think it's going to put them in the same predicament at the farmer's market? Even though it's less people, it's the same thing. You got, they got to wear masks there.
No, I understand that. I think that's a consideration for, for both of these events. That, that would be the one thing that I would say is that it is less people. And we have already seen the mandating of the vendors wearing masks. And the encouragement of masks has been at Sounds of Summer and the farmer's market, where we have seen quite a bit more mask wearing at Sounds of Summer. But, but no, I think that's a, that's a fair point. So, so that's really kind of where we're at. I think it's a, it's a matter of whether or not the city to sponsor and hold events such as Sounds of Summer that typically invites and attracts well more, way more people than 250 on a given basis. That's typically been the, the goal of Sounds of Summer, Friday Night Music, to attract as many people as possible.
But, um, but Sean, but what's the difference with the, I'm like Jay. Um, so what's the difference with Sounds of Summer and farmer's market? I understand you said it's a smaller venue, but you still got people that can contract COVID-19. You don't know if you got it. You know, some people don't show no symptoms. So my thing is that, um, if it's a gathering, a gathering, a gathering can be when people come together, that's a gathering. So anything that requires a gathering, if you're going to put stimulations on one, you would have to put the stimulations on all. Because you don't want it to come back and say, well, they have an event and we only have 50 people, but they have an event for 200 people. You know, so you don't want those stimulations to come back and then you're going to be in a crossfire with, where they have an event and now, well, we can't have one. You don't want that. So if you're going to make the stimulations, put it across the board regardless if it's 50 people or 100 people.
But I think, I understand. I would say that the, all of this kind of was turned on the city's head once the governor made the 250 number of requirement. Prior to that, it was a suggestion, a guideline that, that he was hoping that local governments would enforce. But when that executive order press release was, was announced last week, it was
Right.
It was a hard cap of 250. And that, and that's the only difference in those two events is that at any given point, that gathering at a farmer's market, it's not typically, doesn't typically reach 250 at one time.
But you remember now, Balo has stimulations. Balo have, you, only so many people can come to Balo now. Walmart, most of your restaurants now are going back to doing the drive-through. So which means that, um, even with those gatherings, you still have to look at the stimulation across the board. Because right now, you don't be put in the limo.
I would, I would say the one other difference in the two is the length of stay for an attendee. With a concert, they're sitting for two hours, two plus hours, as opposed to a farmer's market transaction that is, you know, maybe an hour tops if you're talking to people. But usually under probably 30 minutes or less. I think that's, that's just one other difference is the length.
Well, GP, the other, the other part of that is, my understanding is there's not a timeline on catching COVID.
Right. I don't disagree. I just think.
I think the main thing is you could have the same problems at the concert that you have at the farmer's market and vice versa. When it comes to face masks and putting our staff in the predicament of having to do something about it. I think that needs to be taken out of the equation because it could happen at either one.
Right.
Secondly, Sean, secondly Sean, can you go over some of the ideas you had yesterday for limiting it to 250?
What was the worst amount of ideas you still have? First, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Clemmer.
I'd like to ask the question to Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes, do we have any liability by not being able to control the numbers, to attend the music? And is there any personal liability on council members for making the decision that somewhat is a little different than what the governor's recommendations are?
The answer to that question is you don't have any individual or personal liability. The question about the city's liability is more complex. You, you may know that there was a bar or a lounge that shouldn't have been operating, and it was a deadly shooting that took place. And questions were raised why the sheriff's office had not enforced the shutdown of that business. So this is, these are city-sponsored events. And so I do think we, the city has some responsibility to comply with the order. And the other problem that I have is, and Chief Hamilton could speak better to this than I can, but you know, your law enforcement officers are trained and sworn to enforce the criminal laws. Now we're talking about executive orders, which while I understand the governor has put the criminal penalties in it, it still feels like a civil issue. And I'm a little concerned about having police officers with guns and badges going up to people and saying, you have to go home, there's more than 250 people here, or you don't have a mask on. I think it just puts them in a position that I think you'd rather have them out enforcing the criminal laws than, than trying to, to, to enforce masks and social distancing rules.
But if the governor has already enforced it, what's there to discuss? I mean, the governor have already put out in place a stimulations. And then if we go against it and something happens and breaks out, and then Fountain Inn is going to be looked at totally different because y'all, we didn't obey the orders of the governor.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you too, Mr. Holmes. I'm sorry.
Um, the, the one other difference I would say on farmer's market and Sounds of Summer, I think actually, Councilmember Cunningham was kind of alluding to it, is that I think under this pandemic, people have already been accustomed to, to wearing a mask while purchasing food at a grocery store via the restrictions that are, have been in place via these private corporations, whether it be Walmart, Publix, Balo. But, you know, I, I think your other points are well taken on that too. And I think the city would take guidance from city council as to if we thought that that liability was, was too great to even have the farmer's market, a city would, would comply. On the flip side of that, as Councilmember Thomason was alluding to, you know, I have no doubt that our city staff can, can pull off a Sounds of Summer under these restrictions. I think there are ways that we can increase or decrease the, the amount of access points. It's not going to be easy. I think it's going to take additional police resources. It'll take other additional resources, such as barricades and things of that nature. There are other things that we could do. I mean, if, if access was restricted, I think there, you know, Eventbrite could be a possibility where we sold free tickets online and once 250 tickets were, were sold, no more. You see, you'd have to present a ticket. I think there are ways and staff would be, you know, if that was council's desire, we can make it work. I think the question more for, for council and maybe what Councilmember Clummer's point was is, is this something that, that the city wants to continue under these circumstances? Is this something that we want to enforce? Is the Sounds of Summer something that is still going to be desirable at 250 people? At everybody wearing masks? I think those are really the, the considerations that council's being asked tonight.
But, but Sean, but what, what y'all fail to realize, okay? What we fail to realize, everybody can come out and wear a mask, okay? But the sad part about it, you don't know who has it. You don't know, if you got it, you don't have, you don't, you're not showing the effects of it, the signs of it. Just like when I go to work every day at BMW, there's a lot of people at BMW that has COVID, but no one know who it is because of the fact that first, it's confidential. Secondly of all, you going in, you got your mask on, but people are still catching the COVID-19. So even though you got 250 people there, who's to say that all those people are not positive versus negative? And my standpoint is that I'm fine if y'all do it or don't do it. But I'm not coming out because I'm not going to put me nor my family and my kids at risk. Because I don't know who has it and who doesn't have it. And I don't want to catch anything. So, I mean, how, what y'all decide on, I'm fine with it. But everybody has their own decision to make, you know?
Well, let me, let me ask, are there any concerns that it was announced last Friday night? Those are going to be discontinued on Friday nights? I mean, do we recover from that? How do we recover from that?
Well, I, personally, I think if we go back to having it, the announcement may have been a good thing. It may limit the crowd. We pulled it from the radio. It may help the crowd to stay down. Do I think the comment should have been made? No. I think we should have probably waited till we had this meeting before the comment was made. And we got the, the governor's paper, all this all the rules, all the rules out before we made the announcement, but.
Well, I think it's recoverable if, if, if there's the decision tonight to put additional resources down there to do whatever is decided to do to control the crowd. It's, it's definitely recoverable, but it's just a matter of whether we want to do that.
Well, you know, a lot of people I've talked to, they enjoy that Friday night. That's their one night. They go out, they get out of the house. They feel safe there. It's open air. And I mean, a lot of it, a lot of it is, is our senior citizens there. There's a lot of young people, but they don't seem to mind. They come out, they state of themselves, and they go back home. I think everybody that would come would wear a mask. Like Anthony said, they're wearing them when they're going to Balo, Walmart, and everywhere else. They're used to wearing them. And I'm not saying we can have it. And next week, we have to cancel it because people aren't doing the right thing. I would just like to see some options of how we could do it, and let's make a call then.
I have a question of Chief Hamilton. How many, how many additional officers do you feel like it's going to require to control access and from, and I haven't been to a lot of these. Actually, I've only been to one. But I have a, I have a wife that's been going and she's formerly with the chamber and formerly a professional event planner. And personally, I, I think our event staff would need to be more engaged than what they have been in addition to the police support. But how many officers do you feel like we would require down there, chief, to successively control and count the number of people coming into the venue?
We had, we had planned on having four there for this coming Friday night, if that's, if that's what council decides to do. We felt like, obviously, in addition to the, the four, having four officers there, that we're going to have to, I think Sean mentioned, just having more, I guess barricades where we have more control of the access points, maybe just having two access points. But we were going to, we were going to see how four officers, how, how that went and, and then go from there. But I felt like with four, that we would, we'd be in a better position to handle the situation. But I think too, is something that maybe was discussed with the event staff too, is to maybe have someone, maybe at each entry exit point to help with the count too. Because in the officers, obviously, one of the things we're going to have to be making sure of people are wearing masks and then trying to count too. That can be, that would be a great challenge. So having someone at each, you know, if we'd had two entry points, having someone at each point, someone volunteer whatever to, to help with the count.
So this is four off-duty officers that we're paying additional security for?
Yes, sir. Actually, it's going to be three. And then I had planned on being there. I was going to be the fourth officer there because I wanted to be there too, just to, to help, help those three. So that'd be four of us there, but three that would be paid the off-duty pay.
Thank you.
One of my, my concerns is what the spirit of Sounds of Summer is. We've got a couple of big bands that we've booked coming up. And my, one of, I hate limiting, first of all, I hate this executive order. I think things were going fine the way they were. I think people were coming out if they chose to do so. And we had recommended all of the necessary health requirements. And I, this, this order has talked to some today about how many holes this order seems to have, how hard it is, in my opinion, to effectively enforce. And my worst fear is that we, we, you know, we have to enforce it and it gets to a point. I don't like putting the officers in a place where they have to enforce something that as a city, we have already said, we don't, we don't believe should be a requirement. I think we've, we said in our last meeting that we don't want to require people to wear masks. That's, we think that should be an individual choice. And now we're being forced to, to enforce that at some of our own events. And I, I, I don't really, I just can't support requiring people to do, to do that. I also.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't disagree with the fact that the, the executive order is vague. However, you know, I have observed that the recommendations that, that we put in place are not being followed. People are not social distancing and people are not wearing masks. And so that kind of puts us in the middle of where do we go with this?
I think that's, yeah, that's exactly why we're here, here today is this, this is a, I, yeah, I don't like it one bit. And I am not a fan of this executive order. I am not a big fan of the burden this governor has placed on us to enforce this. And I don't like putting our officers and staff in a place where something that has become this divisive now has to be enforced. And then they're put in the front line of that. I know that they will do that. They'll do it really well. I know that they're going to do their job and, and I trust them 120%. I just hate putting them in that position.
But it, it is what it is. This is what we have to work with. So I think the question comes down to, in regards to Sounds of Summer and the farmer's market, two observations I have. I've been to probably three or four Sounds of Summer. I have my mask with me, but I don't wear my mask because I'm out in the venue, it's outside. And I haven't felt like there's been too many people crowded around. Last Friday was more people than I've seen there, you know, but we try to maintain the social distance and we're outside. On Fri, Saturday mornings at the farmer market, a lot more people wear masks to that venue. There's not hardly anybody, I mean, maybe 50 people, the most I've seen at one time. But people are walking around wearing masks. So I don't think that the farmer's market will be an issue for enforcing the mask. I am concerned about Sounds of Summer, but I think this is a great community and we let them know, hey, in order for this to occur, this is what has to happen. You don't have to like it, you don't have to come. So I think if we put that out there and say, yes, we want to try it. And if it works on Friday, then great. If it doesn't work, then we can say, we tried to put these measures in, but it didn't work out because people weren't participating and doing their part of it. And then it's canceled. Just my thought.
AJ, I agree with you. I'd like to see us try one or two, just to see if we can get it under control. Do I think this Friday night will be perfect? Probably not, because it's short notice. But, um, you know, give it two weeks. If we can't get it under control, I'm good with canceling at that point. But like AJ, I think we have good people here in town. If they know they have to have a mask, let's see how they do. Let them, let them, let them adult theirself.
Mr. Mahoney or Phil or Mr. Cunningham, have you all have anything? Mr. Mahoney or Phil or Mr. Cunningham, y'all have anything?
Well, I mean, since you asked me, man, it's a difficult situation, certainly. And the easy out is to just cancel everything. I don't disagree about having, you know, trying to have one more concert to see how it goes. But I would, I would put money on it that you will not get everybody to wear a mask. That's just, I mean, when I go into the grocery store, not everybody's wearing a mask. And in fact, I see less masks than I do people without, or than I do with, and so. I, I just don't think, and it's going to be difficult. You're going to put people that are trying to police this thing, it's going to put them in a tough situation. You're going to, you're going to have to ask people to go home, and that's going to create all kinds. In my opinion, it's going to create problems. So, you know, I, you know, we've already passed the edict, and let's just go with it. Try to hope to recover next year.
Well, I have a question, Chief Hamilton. The way the order reads, those patrons who are going to be at Caccino's and Jay Peters and tacos, blah, 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 all that. And if they come in and they're refusing to wear a mask, I mean, you're going to be put, they'll have to call the police to come and say, hey, these people won't leave our establishment or won't put on their mask. Is that the same, I don't want to compare apples to oranges, but is that kind of the same situation we're putting in the police to force, enforce this?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're required to, to wear it. I mean, they could, they would, if we're called, that would be, you know, part of the order that we were, we're supposed to, we're required to enforce.
But according, but according to executive order, somebody can also claim they have a disability that they don't have to wear a mask, and you can't do anything about it. If you read this order, I could claim I had asthma, and I have to wear a mask at all.
Yeah, I mean. I, I, I just feel like, whatever decision we make, I afraid that we all be on the same page in the board. But like I stated earlier, I'm fine either way it goes. I just know I won't be attending whether it's mask on or mask off. And I won't be, probably won't be attending, but when you got a lot of senior citizens down in that area too, and downtown is mostly a lot of senior citizens. I don't know if y'all heard, there were three grandparents that lost their life with COVID-19, and they didn't go nowhere. So evidently, it was a grandkid that brought something back to the house that took them out. And so, whatever y'all decide on, I mean, like I said, I'm fine with it. I have, I'm not for, I'm not against, but if you're going to close down summer, you need to close down the farmer's market.
Councilman Cunningham, I, I would personally appreciate it if you would make a stand one way or the other. That, because we're all missing one council member tonight, and if we are taking a vote, I'd like to know exactly where one stands.
I would say, I would say, if you're going to, if you're going to close down the Sounds of Summer, you need to close down farmer's market as well.
So are you saying that, that tonight, you're, you're suggesting that your vote would be to close the Sounds of Summer?
Yeah, if you're going to, if you're going to close Sounds of Summer, you would have to close down the farmer's market. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the, go ahead, Anthony, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, all of it is a gathering, so whether you got 15 people at a farmer's market versus 250, you still got a gathering. So if you close down the Sounds of Summer, we need to close down farmer's market. If you're going to leave that one open, you need to leave the other one.
I think the, to, to that point, part, I think it's the, it's the number game with that one. I think it's easier to enforce at the farmer's market just because of the number of people. But I, I get, I understand the philosophy doesn't really, you know, it, I understand your point, Mr. Cunningham, 100%. I think the primary concern that I've heard from, from, from staff is these events that tend to attract close to or above 250 people are the ones that are causing the most headache of how, how do you manage this? How do you, how do you enforce it while still maintaining, I think this is important too, the spirit of, of the event? The idea behind Sounds of Summer is to get as many people as possible to our downtown. If you're capping it, not only are you limiting the number of people that obviously can show up, but I, I also think we've made an investment in some of these bands with the intention of attracting as many people as possible. And I, I feel like we, we sort of start skirting the spirit of Sounds of Summer and then start sort of forcing it when, when, I, I think this is going to kind of not really maintain the spirit of it. I know we've got a couple, like I said, a couple of big bands that I'm, I'm pretty sure would, would pack that place out. And that's why we're willing to spend the money we're spending on them. And then to spend the same amount of money and limit the number of people and the access feels, I don't know, I feel like that's not an enjoyable experience for, for some people.
Well, GP, I agree, and I will disagree with that, just saying that with these times, why aren't we doing something for our citizens here in town? We don't have to have everybody coming to town, let's give our citizens something to get out and do. You know, these, these bands are going to bring in lots of people, we cancel them and find a local band to take care of that night. Get some of our money back. With that being said, I would like to make a motion that we, we go with this Friday night and see how it goes. And we'll, we'll talk about it again next week, if it didn't go well or went well.
Okay, there's a motion from Mr. Thomason to continue Friday night with all of the mandates from the governor in place. Is there a second?
Can I second it, and we have some more discussion?
Yes, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, yeah, thank you, no problem. Yeah, open up for discussion.
Okay, my question is, what is, what is the plan, other than four additional officers, to limit the 250? I know barricades, but do we have a written plan? Does the event staff know what they want to do in order to achieve this?
Mr. Bell?
I would say that myself, Mayor McClear, our, our police chiefs have met with our event staff since the beginning of this pandemic to discuss, you know, ways we can comply with guidelines. And also, I'm not sure if everyone was aware that with Naomi's promotion in July 1, she began being the immediate supervisor for both Heather and Ellen. So she, she's been involved in all these conversations as well. We, I think, took a stab at limiting access on a few weeks. I don't think we went to the point to where it needed to be in order to control access. I think we made just kind of a so-so effort on that. But I also think that the venue lends itself to, I mean, you, you've got to really lock it down in order to, in order to control that access. So putting up barricades, but without a person or a police officer there, I don't, I don't think does it. So, you know, some of those where we put up barricades, but there wasn't a person just manning that location, it lent itself to people slipping in and that sort of thing. So I, I don't think that we have done a full-blown experiment, if you will, on, on locking down entry points into, you know, having it funneled into just one or two, and doing, we haven't done a ticketing system or anything like that. Again, I think if, if that was the, the plan that the council wanted, I mean, staff can definitely put together a plan on how we would attempt to comply with all of those requirements.
So do we even have clickers for our staff or the police officers to use to make accurate headcount?
We, we do have clickers. Again, the, the problem with the counts that have occurred thus far is, so, is that it's been going through the crowd and counting, as opposed to, let's say you're going to Bon Secour Wellness Arena, and you go through a gate and they click you. That, that's a more accurate number. So we're, we're more or less doing, we've been able to do kind of a spot count. I, I think it's only fairly accurate.
And the problem, I, I agree with that. And the problem lies with, is how do you keep up with the folks that leave? How do you count them, and without constantly going through the crowd and doing a, a headcount?
I agree, I think it's, it's a challenge. I, I think you would have to have dedicated entry and exit points where, where people were clicking in and clicking out in order to maintain that, that number.
I, I would agree with that, and I, I believe that's going to require more than four police officers and two staff members.
I don't disagree. And then also with the order is that those staff members are part of that count. So, you know, let's say we had five or 10 officers, well, then we're down to 240 people. The, the food vendors are considered, so it's, it's the entire gathering.
But Sean, I'm understanding that you cannot count the people in the back part of Grauer House in that lot. Am I correct? And you cannot count the people in the alleyway eating dinner at Caccino's?
I, I don't know if there's been formal guidance on that, but no, I would not consider that as part of the gathering or the venue per se.
Okay.
The order restricts the number of attendees. So the question is always going to be who's attending the concert versus just eating at Caccino's. And that's why I think you're going to have to control egress and ingress to the event, so you clearly know who's attending and who's not.
Which may require, as we have done in the past in the sale of alcohol, some type of armband for concert attendees. It just seems like an awful lot of work to me. We're stretching, we're stretching our staff. If we're talking about having to put six or seven police officers out there, we've only got 28, something like that, chief. I don't know, what do we got, 30 police officers?
And then, you know what, it's not funny, but.
Go ahead, Mr. Cunningham.
It's not funny, but we're talking about 220, 250 people. The marchwear can't even have 50 people when somebody die. I mean, that, I mean, I'm just saying, not trying to be funny, but. So if they don't want 50 people inside the marchwear, and you're trying to get 250 people at a gathering, that's something to think about.
Yeah, I, the, my, one of my last bits is, my concern is, is with the liability piece. It is the legislation that's currently filed at the State House and current, and on file in Congress. It may, is predicated on your ability and your attempt to follow public health guidance. And it is retroactive from February onward. So, meaning if we are, if we are unable to, I think, effectively enforce this, and it ends up being, e, e, even if we're, we get most of it right, we, we open the door up for, for, for a liability issue that honestly, no one has really been able to wrestle with. That is not, it's kind of the last unknown from a policy standpoint with COVID. And I, that, that's kind of another, another big concern I have is we have, if we're going to do it, we have to be, we have to be able to do it, and, and do it well. And at the same time, do something that, as the council has said, we don't really want to do.
Right, right, I agree. People don't even go to church. I'm just using scenarios. You can't get people to go to church, but they'll come downtown to a gathering.
I, I do think it would be important if this, if, I, I think, even if, if we were not to do them, if we were to do one and cancel later or something, I, even with all of these restrictions, I think it's important for our event staff and all staff to think about some ways, once this madness ends. Some, this is going to change, I think, the next 30 days of our city, in a way. I, I think having something to push out and put together when things are able to be, I think is going to be important. And I think some of these, some of these groups that, that, that may or may not be able to perform would be great to, to bring in, especially some of these larger ones that I honestly, I hate restricting the capacity to 250 for, paying that kind of money for, for only 250 or less. So, so far, I'm not seeing any other comment from anybody. So far, we have a motion and a second from Mr. Thomason, second by Ms. Derry Berry, to continue to, to do Friday, and I think it's important to note, to continue with this Friday, with every mandate impacted, implemented by the governor, including, including requiring folks at our events to wear masks, to go ahead with this Friday at least, and then, I guess, have staff review. So far, that's the motion and second. Are there any other points of discussion or questions?
Mayor, you know, if, if we're going to require everybody to wear a mask, the word's going to have to get out. And what do we got, five days or less, or less than that, maybe three or four, to get the word out? And people are going to show up without masks, there's no doubt about it. Are we going to, we're going to hand them one?
My understanding, my understanding is the event staff's already ordered them. Have they arrived, or do we know?
I'd love Ms., Ms. Reed, I do know we ordered them, but I don't know the status.
I don't know the status either, I think we would have them before Friday, so we could pass them out. I just, with the amount of help that Chief Hamilton would need, we have two main special event staff, and then we have two part-timers that may or not, may or may not be able to help. So it may be a push to try to get more help to count the in and out. So we only have four special event staff, and three of which are currently part-time and one is full-time. So to turn that, that around within this short period, we can, we can try, but knowing that we don't have the yes from our floaters right now, we may just be left with Heather and Ellen.
Mayor, my, my question on the, the motion is whether or not council's desires to tackle any of the, you know, farmer's market and some of the, the other event that we have scheduled in September would be the Bike Night Wing Fest. Is, do, does council want to do separate motions? Or I, I guess that would be the thing that staff would want guidance on, is that, I think, for now, I think we would look through the end of September to, you know, a lot of these things take a decent amount of planning. We, we haven't really talked about the Bike Night, Wing Fest, fireworks, all-encompassing event. But that was slated to be on Main Street, which adds a tremendous amount more of entry and exit points. That also includes amateurs cooking and serving to the public. I, I think that lends itself to being even more difficult than Sounds of Summer.
Sean, I'll amend my motion to add the farmer's market into this week. And we'll look at after this week, just like the music. I think the Wing Night, Bike Night, we got a little time on that. And we can see how these two events go to see if we want to try to pull that off. So do you want to amend my motion to add the farmer's market to having it this week and seeing where it goes?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomason. Mr. Holmes, can you talk about real quick, this is a quick item, the emergency ordinance we have and how events are handled in that currently? Do you, do you recall?
Mr. Mayor, I seem to recall that the emergency ordinance allows the city administrator to shut public venues down. Uh, you've given him that authority in order to um, take into effect the changing nature of this crisis. The governor issuing various orders, CDC doing different things about guidelines and so forth. So right now, I think it gives the city administrator that authority. If, if I understand what's happening tonight, what he's saying is that I have concerns about this. And he's inviting council to weigh in on it in spite of what the emergency order says.
Yeah, correct. Uh, yeah, correct. I just, yeah, I think I, I would, JD, your point about, you know, Wing Fest, I think we need staff to also let us know what's the, what's a drop dead date? And that may be sooner than we, than, maybe sooner than later on something like that uh, in order to develop a plan that is caps it, can, can efficiently cap at 250, require all the things. Uh, cause I think until, until we hear otherwise, we have to operate as that every event we do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and.
So, if, if I'm understanding the event, we're going to have people that are not restaurant folks out on Main Street cooking food and serving that to the public. What are the restrictions around, uh, how do they comply with what's required with restaurant owners?
I don't think we have a clear answer other than, other than possibly you, I think that would be our staff saying, here are the guidelines from FDA and DEHAC, you must follow these, but I don't, I don't know what those are. And, yeah, and we have to ensure that everyone follows that. Again, I hate.
So we're gonna police that too?
We would have to. Um, and my, my, my gut is that this will stay in place past that date. Uh, I am not a fortune teller, but I do know the legislature returns mid-September and I suspect there will be change either before or right after that. But uh, uh, none of us are fortune tellers.
I received a text message from Councilmember Cunningham that his Zoom went out. Um, I don't, I don't know if that means that he's unable to rejoin, um, but I will, I will ask him.
Okay. We'll hold for a second then, cause I think we're kind of towards the end of this discussion. I think we're. All right.
Mr. Holmes? I have a question. So as the motion's been amended, so we've linked the farmer's market and the sound of summer is together in this motion?
Well, technically, there's, there's been a motion to amend that hadn't been seconded yet.
Okay.
I mean, I, Mr. Thomason said, I'll amend my motion. So I, I took that as a motion to amend. There needs to be a second on that and then a vote on the amendment before you vote on the main motion then as amended, should it pass.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe it's easier just to come back and make a second motion after we vote on first?
It, it might be, or I, I feel like the same philosophy would apply regardless of the motion, to, to be honest. You know, if we're making a motion about some sounds of summer, staff has got, gonna have to implement those requirements anyway for the farmer's market. And I think, you know, if that were to pass for the sounds of summer, I, I feel like obviously we're, we would review both because both would have to have the requirements anyway. I don't, I, I, do you, would you agree with that, Mr. Thomason?
Yes, sir. I agree. I agree with you. I was just trying to make the whole thing.
I agree. Yeah, I, I got you. So I, my, I mean, we can, I, I think we can leave that, to be technical about, I think we can leave that motion as not seconded and not, not taken in, uh, and we just stick with your original motion. And I think obviously, if that were to pass, we would review both. I mean, they're both gonna be required to have those same restrictions anyway.
A- as far as uh, Councilmember Cunningham, I asked if he was able to rejoin and his response was no, I'm trying. So I'm not exactly sure what that means. If that means he's, he's trying to rejoin, or if that was a typo and he meant, no, I'm driving. So, so I'm not entirely sure. I've asked him to clarify, so I don't, I don't. Now he's asking for somebody to send him a link, uh, which we can, we can do. I just don't, if, if he wants to be a part of the vote, I don't want him to, to miss out.
Correct, correct. I guess we'll pause for a second then. I mean, I don't, if that's okay with everybody.
Madam Clerk is going to attempt to, to call Councilmember Cunningham, see if we can get him on the line.
Okay.
Okay, so what happened?
We can hear you, Mr. Cunningham.
I can hear you, I'm waiting.
Okay, we, we haven't made many more discussion or anything. We're, I think we're kind of at the point where we're gonna vote on the motion from Mr. Thomason to go ahead with this Friday with all mandates in place uh, and us enforcing them. And uh, and, and go for, and that, that's kind of the motion on the table. So, I don't see any other discussion or any other questions. So, uh, just to be clear, a yes vote would be to uh, continue Friday with uh, with all of the mandates and then re-evaluate. And a no vote would be to, uh, I, I believe, Mr. Holmes, a no vote would be just to dismiss that, to deny that motion, which would then leave the executive order in place of a staff decision.
That's correct.
Ultimately, I, I feel like that's been an informed decision based on this conversation. Sean, do you feel like that's appropriate?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. That, that'll work. But see, I go this Friday and then and if we get out of control, out of hand, we'll just come back and uh, revisit it.
Okay, so I still need to vote on it. So, uh, I guess Ms. uh, Ms. Woods, if you wouldn't mind doing the roll call for that motion.
Councilmember Mahoney?
No.
Councilmember Thomason?
Yes.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
No.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Nay.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Mayor McClear?
No. So the motion fails 5-1. Um, I think we'll have staff re-recirculate or circulate uh, how, what the messaging around this may be. And uh, and, and the, I, I believe that would mean the cancellation of, of sounds of summer, unfortunately, to all of our dismay and yeah. Um, any other comments or questions before we adjourn?
I just wanna say that was, I don't want, I really hate to do that, but I just can't see how we can turn around something and, and have something in place in three days to meet all these mandates. I'm just, I'm just concerned about that.
Yeah, I.
I think it puts undue stress on our employees and our staff and our officers.
They're gonna do the same thing for the farmer's market come Saturday morning. They gotta be ready in four days.
Well, they've been ready at the farmer's market. I mean, of course, I can say.
Now it's required. You're doing the same thing. Now it is required. Just like it would have been on Friday night.
I think smaller numbers lend to being a little more easier, but that's just my thought.
It doesn't take but one person to turn it all upside down.
And I, I do think if this order were to be lifted at any point, I would gladly revisit all of this and turn lights back on as, as soon as staff is able to do so. Uh, this was not a pleasant or enjoyable uh, decision to make. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? I hear, I hear Mr. Clemmer, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mahoney, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? The ayes have it, we are now adjourned.